All right, welcome everyone. Let's go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I've asked Commissioner Daley to give a prayer of thought tonight, so I'll turn the time over to him.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things real quick. I'll do a quick little thought and then also off for a prayer. Continuing with my theme, the past few times I've done this, of talking about some historical planning and kind of how did we get to where we are today. Some past comments, some past discussions here at the Planning Commission, we've talked about the freeway, and the freeway through Centerville and where there's an off-ramp and not and whatnot. So, quick little history of that. In 1961, as of 1961, the plan was for the freeway to bypass Centerville pretty much completely. There'd be an off-ramp at Fourth North, an off-ramp up at Burke Lane in Farmington, and nothing in between. So, some of the city council in Centerville and the mayor worked hard to try and get UDOT and the Federal Bureau of Roads, or whatever it was called at the time, to make some changes. The other thing they wanted to change was that the plan was to have the frontage road running through Centerville, the east side frontage road, just where it ended up today, and the city decided that was fine. But the west side frontage road was going to run in between the Union Pacific Railroad line and the freeway. And so if you think about that, in between there, you know, what's the point? And so, the mayor of Centerville at the time, Vernon Carr, said, "That doesn't do us any good. Let's, can we move that? Can we move that road to the other side of the Union Pacific line and then we can actually get some economic benefit out of it?" So there was a whole bunch of meetings. The citizens of Centerville kind of rallied together and filled out some, they called them ballots in here, but essentially kind of like a petition to just change that. And they put together a few points of what they wanted to happen. They wanted an interchange at Parish Lane with Parish Lane then going over or under the freeway and then the railroad. They wanted to relocate that west frontage road out west. They wanted cattle crossings for the freeway. I don't remember, I don't know of any cattle crossings out there now, but that was one of the requests. Then, the original quest included a northbound off-ramp at Porter Lane and a southbound on-ramp at Page's Lane, which is an interesting idea, and I think that's where this idea that the freeway exit would be at Page's Lane. That was actually ultimately nixed because, you know, too many on-ramps and off-ramps in a short period of time don't lend themselves well to flow. But, after a lot of work and lobbying of US senators and the US representative, the US congressman from Utah at the time, they actually ultimately got what they were asking for, all except for some of the Porter Lane and Page's Lane stuff and the cattle crossings. But, what was interesting, a couple of other things really quick that are interesting. Oh, the freeway was dedicated out here in 1972, in October of 1972. They anticipated at the time that by 1990 that the freeway would handle 91,000 cars per day. It actually only did 75,000 cars per day in 1990. But today, we're up at 159,000 cars per day on our freeway right out here. So, to me, sorry, this ended up kind of being long, but what I liked about this whole thing was the planning process that went involved, went into developing the freeway in Centerville. They started well in advance of when the freeway actually was ever started under construction to get kind of what they wanted. And I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of glad that it ended up the way that it did versus some of those previous plans that they had kicked around out there. So, interesting stuff for sure. And with that, I'll offer a short prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity we have to gather together as Planning Commission and to discuss the issues of the city. We thank thee for the opportunity, the freedom that we have to meet and for the input that we receive from the public, from the staff, and applicants and others. And we thank thee that we are able to work well together, and we ask thee to bless that we can take all of the information into consideration and that we can continue to have good discussions and ultimately decide what we feel is best for the city and the residents in the city. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you very much. Very interesting. I give you credit for going back and pulling all of those old articles. Took some really good eyesight to read that little tiny print.
Chair, amen. Just a gee whiz, really quick on that, there are still remnants of the west frontage road sitting in Centerville. 200 North, which is the road between the storage sheds and the apartments, so it's on the other side of the apartment, south of it, is a UDOT road that was purchased part of that federal grant period. It's an 80-foot right-of-way, larger than we'd ever used there, but that road was purchased by UDOT as part of that freeway system plan. So, UDOT still owns that road based on that old federal plan. Interesting.
That was fascinating. All right, so we have two matters up for consideration tonight. The first, we are being asked to consider the proposed final plat for Sheffield Downs, which is located at 274 East Page's Lane. So I'll turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. As indicated, the project's known as Sheffield, is it Sheffield Downs? Yeah, Sheffield Downs subdivision. I didn't know if Estates was listed in there, but Sheffield Downs subdivision. This is the final process to divide and develop the land to single-family planned unit development project. It is located on Page's Lane. It is roughly between where the Deserted Industries ends and then goes east until you reach the Dick's Ace area. So it'll encompass that U-shaped shopping center, the old Rogers Memorial, and also the old Dick's Market grocery store. We're here, they've applied for a plan development overlay to create this project. It was part of the general plan of the city. If transitioning to residential, they had to apply for this process where we could have input on the design and the layout of the product. It is zoned residential medium now. They are developing at the allotted density of six units per acre, so it'll be 33 single-family home lots. As you recall in your preliminary and conceptual approvals, when you looked at it, this also includes private streets will serve the development, they will not be public streets. There is a park area that will function in two parts. Part of it is a detention and an open field area. And on the southern end, you'll have a playground and a pavilion area. They also provide some onsite parking for that facility, so visitors, it'll function both as visitors and others that want to be invited by those who own the development to have their activities in that park area. And this will consist of single-family lots in this planned design. So they're here before you. We've provided a report to you on their preliminary approval. It, from our view, complies predominantly, significantly with that preliminary approval. There are some minor things on CCNRs and some notes on the plat that we called out to, the perimeter setbacks. We also, in our report, address the future needs of the product. If it prepares to go to city council and be recorded, there's some steps that need to take place. And so we tried to outline in our report, not only for the commission, but if it moves forward, it would carry an understanding for the city council as they debate it, and if it moved forward to recording, which we anticipate the likelihood, it gives the instructions so everybody's on the same page for what it takes to record the development. One unique aspect that had come about in discussion with the project was the turn movements for the entry and exit, the private entry and exit areas. On this western end, you see there's a commercial lot that won't be part of the residential developments being platted, so it can be separated off from the larger parcel. That's a joint-use access, so recording a joint-use access. That's a very needed entrance for the commercial lot as well as for the project. You have east side, that's probably the point of what was raised and some concerns. On the east property boundary, there is an entrance. It is slated also as a joint access in the future for when the east of that property ever develops, they have an opportunity to tie in. The concept is we're trying to reduce the number of curb cuts on Page's Lane associated with previous development as commercial, having many curb cuts. The applicant has had a engineering firm who deals in transportation take a look at it. It's not a full-blown transportation study. The position that they have taken and staff agrees with, the amount of traffic generated here doesn't really lend itself to having a big study about stop-turn movements and capacities of roads. But they did address what they thought the generation of trips would occur with the residential versus the previous commercial. If you look at the numbers, on a daily basis with the commercial use, there's a significant amount of traffic if it remained, or when it was commercial, there'd be a significant amount of traffic. There's much less with the residential. And the separations are sufficient with that center median to handle most of the conflicts. It doesn't mean that some coming out of the driveways on the north side might not have to be a little more cautious as they watch the cars coming down the road, but it should not generate any new conflicts and should lessen the amount of conflicts. And so they provide that report to you to explain their position on it. And our staff at the Development Review Committee agrees with the findings that have taken place. So, at this point, we, other than our conditions in fine-tuning the plat, making sure the construction drawings are acceptable, we're recommending that the commission consider approving the development and sending it, or at least recommending approval to the development, sending it to the city council for their review.
Thanks Cory. Any questions for staff?
You might have mentioned this, Cory, who owns the east end and who owns the west end?
It's, the Weineggers themselves have varied interests in it. They have combined the two varied interests together, and it's managed by Mr. Blash in the report. I believe the transfer of property as a whole, there's multiple lots underneath this plat. The properties involved in this plat, I believe the transfer has gone to Brighton Homes. The county records have not reflected that. I checked the county records to see if that transfer has shown up on their records. It didn't. So we left the, Mr. Blash's name on our reports as indicating the property owner. But I think the transfer supposedly has taken place, you can ask their representative. But Mr. Blash is also in agreement with both sides of the family for the Dick's Ace and the corner Domino's piece. And Mr. Blash is a representative of the family in those interests. So, they've combined their interests together into one representative.
On the west end, is it one single owner or are there a variety of owners?
On the further west than the development?
Yeah.
There's multiple owners. I believe the old Steak and Shake, I have to call it that, it wasn't that old.
Jackson's.
Jackson's. The 3D, the old 3D video, those are different owners. I'm using some names that I'm familiar with.
That's old, yeah. You're going way back Cory. 3D video.
Long time ago.
I think, just one more question, I think this was asked last time we were here, and I just, if it was asked, I wasn't sure if it was answered, at least the way that I understood it, but 350 East that comes, that's at the east end of this development? Is there a 350 East on the opposite side of Page's, or is that, does it just run into the school?
There's actually a 300 East that divides the old Bolling office, which is now those six condominium units. And 300 East divides the condominium units with the school. So, you're probably the upper two-thirds coming from the west, two-thirds of the property hit 300 East, then hit 350 East on this side of the street. So somewhere in the neighborhood of Lot, was it Lot 5, you're going to see 300 East showing up across the street.
If you look at the last attachment, is it? Last attachment, the very last.
Do you think it's kind of funny, there's a little bit of a, I don't know.
Trip generation?
Little bit of a, yeah, play on words, or not a play on words, but just kind of a little, almost spin, you know? This is a dramatic reduction in traffic, true compared to the old, but for the last, what, six years now?
Right.
It's sat vacant, so it's a small increase over what it has been, but.
Correct. If you count the vacancy, it's going from very little to there'll be more with the homes.
Cory, I know this is, these are all gross, this is all gross density together. What, a lot of these are about 3,900 square feet lots, square foot lots. Do you know what that comes out to in acreage?
I haven't done the calculate, there, a lot of them are 50, I don't remember it is.
What was the size of it?
70 something.
3,900 about?
About, yeah, about, I don't know what's, the acreage, just the lot acreage? Is that what you're asking, the net of the lot acreage? I haven't performed that.
Point one, a little bit less than point one.
I would say so, yeah.
Yeah.
Forty-two, fifty-sixty.
Seeing if anybody had a calculator.
Yeah, it was like point oh-nine or something like that, but.
Just under point one.
But at this point, I think with, when you get to lot sizes these days, it's usually a better tool, just to use the square footage number rather than to get too fractional.
I just know that most people just.
Think in terms of.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
There's no major, like, changes from the original proposal?
No major changes. There's some, been some shifting of lot lines on the back south lots to adjust some of those lines, given some of the infrastructure improvement that needs to take place. So, you'll see, I think Lot 33 and 31 are a little different than their original configuration, adjusting those lines, but no major changes.
And are there still going to be master on the main lots, or houses for lots 32 and 33?
I, that's their product.
Okay.
So they can ask them that question of how they're designing and marketing their product. It's good to have that, but I'm not sure who they're targeting. The plan is for basements too, just so you're aware. The infrastructure's being constructed in a manner to keep basements.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll invite the applicant to step forward and speak if you'd like to.
Unless you have questions.
Why don't you go ahead and come up just in case some do have questions?
Great. Yeah, my name's Taylor Spindlove, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Do you know about the master on the main?
Yeah, so, we're actually bidding out two plans right now that will fit on all of the lots that have master on the main. It's, we, it would be a Rambler, it'd be one bedroom on the main floor, and then we'd finish the entire basement with the initial home for retirees.
Thank you.
And Cory talked about the ownership, has that transferred then?
Yeah, so we do own it now.
Okay.
The original ownership was, Weineggers owned the bottom west side, and Marv Blash's wife owned the property to the Dick's Market.
Looks like that was it. Thank you so much. Any other? I did not, I called him his appropriate name today. We've had this conversation, we're good now, yes. All right, any other questions for staff? Any further discussion or debate? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I hereby make a motion for the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the final subdivision plat for plans, and plans, for the proposed Sheffield Downs PDO subdivision located at approximately 274 East Page's Lane, subject to conditions 1 through 6 in the staff report, and reasons for action A and B with a minor amendment to B. The commission finds that the conditions of the final subdivision plat and plan approval are, render the development, so just to strike "are," render the development consistent with the requirements of the rest of the business.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or debate? If not, let's go ahead and start with Commissioner Hoggason.
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving right along to the next item on our agenda. We are being asked to consider the proposed preliminary subdivision plat for Legacy Lands, a commercial subdivision at 1243 North, 1300 West. We'll turn the time over to staff.
All right, thank you. This is a five-lot commercial subdivision in the Shorelands Commerce Park on 1300 West, so right before you get to the Legacy Trail. So back in September, the Planning Commission approved the conceptual site, including with just a few conditions or corrections. So this Lot 5 here, you approved with these kind of non-straight lines, so it looks more like a flag-shaped lot, but not a flag lot. And that frontage was corrected to 50 feet, so it meets the requirement, so it's not a flag lot, it's just flag-shaped. The subdivision will have this private road going through it with these two access points on the north end, and then one on the 1300 West. And then, the main chunk of the preliminary plat application is the soils report. It's referred to as the aquatics study in the staff report, because it was presumed that there were some wetlands on this property, so it was just a matter of finding out where exactly they were. So as you can see in the staff report and in the backup study that's provided in the backup materials, this company researched where the wetlands were, and they found them, that they were mostly in the western 50 feet.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, sorry. Of this land, so you can see that it's kind of colored in green here. It also happens to lie within a 50-foot commercial easement of the property, so I don't think it really affected their initial building plans. But what it did affect is just moving this road over, so the road wouldn't be in the wetlands, so that was just kind of moved easterly just slightly, so it wouldn't be built on the wetlands. In the future, if the applicant would like these off the plat for any reason, they could apply with the Army Corps to have them mitigated, but for now, they'll stay on the plat unless moving forward with the Army Corps. In the future, they could get a plat amendment if they so choose. So that was the biggest finding of that aquatics report. It was just like this wetlands area to the west that we kind of knew about to begin with. So, nothing major has changed in the, like, layout or anything of the lots, so it was just kind of wrapping up some minor things in the preliminary application, like some minor corrections from the city engineer, and a few odds and ends before we get to final.
Thanks Cassie. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a quick question Cassie. So, with that wetlands area there on that west side, where there's also the easements, there are utility easements, right?
Communication, I think it's fiber, right?
Yeah, there's fiber and I don't, there's two easements that go through. I think there's also another pipeline in there, I think, if I recall correctly.
So there's already a lot of constraints on what can be done there anyway, right? But what can they do with that? Can they do some landscaping type stuff, or do they have to leave it as natural as possible, or what, you know what I mean?
In general, the Army Corps likes to keep things off limits, so when they go through their construction, they'll delineate that and not disturb the wetlands. I know as they refine the edges of the wetlands, the Army Corps works with them to make that transition appropriately, so there'll probably be something like that. What I anticipate in the future for this lot is, it's a big, flag-shaped lot, it's not a flag lot again, flag-shaped lot. Their plans are to use the area that's out of the wetlands, their access will be out of the wetlands, but because you have a pipeline easement in there in addition to the wetlands, if the wetlands were mitigated, it could be used for some parking and some other, you know, minor structures and depending on what the pipeline easement describes. So really, the value to them is, do they want to mitigate the wetlands to use it for some, just basically, surface improvements? Or do they want to leave it as wetlands and not mitigate it into the future? So, but in general, the transition, the Army Corps works with them, but the Army Corps tries to keep them in the condition that they're in. Thanks Cory.
Any other questions for staff?
So this is across the street from like, Project Move and that karate place?
Yes, west of it.
West of it.
From the Salmon Development, yeah. It's, this is just north of the UDOT sheds.
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, we'll invite the applicant to step forward, speak to this matter. You'll introduce yourself for us.
Thank you, I'm Jeff Cook. The owners are here, Gary and Gordon Smith. And we've just been working with the city. We did have that, TerraCon did the report for us on the Phase 1 study, and we've submitted an application to the Corps to see what they may or may not be willing to do, but we don't expect to hear anything for, I don't know, a few months probably. So we don't really know anything, but because of the easement, it's pretty restricted what we could do there in any case, so. But, I think we're just anxious to start moving forward, so. Do you have any questions for me?
So is it your goal then ultimately to mitigate those wetlands and use it maybe as Cory talked about for parking or whatever?
We would like to, if they'll allow that, but of course, we don't know.
Right, yeah. But that's kind of the goal you're working toward?
We'd like to work, we'd like to do that if they'll, if they allow it, if they don't, then.
Yeah.
Then we can't, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions for, well, I guess actually technically, this has been scheduled for a public hearing, so we'll take the opportunity to open the public hearing if anyone would like to speak to this matter. Seeing neither gentleman rushing forward to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, real quick question. In the recommendation, this, you know, proposed staff recommendation, number four talks about showing the culinary and storm drain. Is that culinary water and then storm drain two separate things, or is that the same thing? You know what I mean?
Yeah, they're separate. You have a culinary system and then you have a storm drain system.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
Reading it.
Missing something.
Can you tell me what the little jut out of the lot is on the northeast corner?
That's a separate owner, that I, the gray area that's in the staff report.
Oh, it is?
That, this area?
Right at the intersection?
Yeah, that's actually a separate parcel that's owned by another person.
It's not part of the subdivision?
Yeah.
Correct, it's not part of the subdivision. I know that there's been ongoing discussions with the property owner.
How big is that parcel? It's like bitty.
It's not very big.
Yeah, it's small.
It's not very big.
It's not going to be able to.
The representative of the owner of the property met with staff last week to just find out what the project was. I know that the owner of this project and them have had some initial contact, I don't know the extent of it. You know, my take from the representative of that corner piece is, they see the advantage of cooperating with the current applicant.
What does it say?
Point one-seven.
But, again, it's a private matter of negotiation between two parties, so.
Okay.
We're leaving, we've left that to them, and, you know, one thing. And, you know, one thing is, it could be incorporated into the future, if needed, be into the development.
And what is it, what is it zoned?
I'm going to informally ask the applicant. Did you want to address us further?
Maybe a little clarification on that.
Just a second. Hold on for, because we technically closed the public hearing. So, you are the applicant. So, let's go ahead and have you step forward. If you'd like to speak, just come up to a microphone.
Just, maybe just some clarification for you. And then a question too. So, did Dr. Naesbit come in and talk to you?
His son.
His son? Okay. Well, that's good to hear. We talked with them early on, or I met Dr. Naesbit on site. And we made an offer, and he came and offered a few things. And we weren't able to come to an agreement on that. And, but like last week, a week ago Tuesday, you know, I reached out to him. Again, we've, it just is such a nuisance strip there, honestly. And it makes so much sense to try to, you know, incorporate that if there's any way that we can. Of course, we don't control that. But I reached out to him again on Tuesday to see if he'd meet with me again on that. I haven't heard back from him. So, it's been a little over a week since I reached out. But maybe he's been out of town. Before, when I've tried to contact him, it's usually taken a while to get a response. That's where it is right now. We would love to incorporate it. And if between now and final we can, you know, we would love to do that. But, you know, it's not completely in our, within our power, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, just answering that a little bit.
Thanks so much. Any other questions for staff?
That doesn't present any issues if they added that little piece between final plat? Do you think it doesn't seem to be a significant change?
Well, it's kind of a legal question of how the transfer takes place. But there are rules about lot line adjustments, and we just have to confirm where they're at in the process and which rule would apply to them.
Any further discussion or debate? If not, I am going to make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision for Legacy Lands at 1243 North, 1300 West, with directives one through eight in the staff report. For reasons A and B, except B, there's a typo. So, it says standards in the chapter. We just need to take out the, and I should just read in chapter 15-5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or debate? If not, we'll start down with you this time, Christian O'Rey.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Third item on our agenda. We have a meeting schedule. Turn the time over to staff to tell us anything about said meeting schedule that you would like to tell us.
Go ahead. Cassie's been coordinated with Donna to make sure you get this. It looks like they have some potential question marks for you.
Yeah, pretty self-explanatory, second and fourth Wednesday, except the fourth Wednesday of July is Pioneer Day. And so, we're just recommending to move that into the previous Tuesday.
Works for me. Did anybody have any major conflicts with any of these dates?
Just the case of miss here and there, but...
Well, yeah, nothing, nothing. So, okay. Those look good. So, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is a discussion of the Parish Lane Design Guidelines and a review of our 2018 goals. Corey?
Thank you. So, I preface this with much humbleness approaching the commission after the Christmas party last night, understanding that my age of 53 did not bode well in the competition of limbo. So, I come to you submissive with my abilities at the Christmas party.
My stomach is sore this morning. I'm like, oh, I think I did something. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I realize the difference between you and I. You still have some core strength. Mine's gone.
I obviously haven't used it in a while, though.
So, it was fun. You know, it's a little bit embarrassing to realize how age catches up with you faster than you think. But it was fun. But this is a two-part memo coming from me in a community development director's report. The first part is dealing with the Parish Lane Gateway Design Standards. This comes out of a suggestion by a fellow colleague in the city that functions as our attorney, that one, that
I wonder who that could be?
That staff should have some kind of goals, you know, that are separate, to try to clean things up. So, I've had this in the back mind. And the draft that I provided you was, it was actually done probably nearly two years ago, associated with it. So, it needs a good look over from the draft. But the concept out of it is, staff can't initiate changes. We have to approach the commission, or the council, or some venue like that to approach the changes. So, tonight is not necessarily trying to debate changes. It's more of informing you of some significant issues and problems with that particular ordinance that have been neglected in time since I've been here and need some fixing. So, you know, the problems that staff has seen with that ordinance in particular that drove the change is, in pulling this, is my understanding, this ordinance was pulled from West Jordan by a previous planner in response to Walmart coming in after the Costco pulled out of the RDA discussions. And Walmart was coming in, and before they would come in, they wanted to apply some design standards for the development. So, I'm giving you a little bit of hearsay. I don't know the factual. That's my understanding. It seems to support it a little bit that it was borrowed, because there is language in there that's a little a little weird, given some situations in Centerville. So, it wasn't maybe as customized to Centerville in response of trying to get some design standards quickly adopted. The particular angst through time with the ordinance is the concept that Parish Lane has this assumption in the ordinance that we're dealing with a 30-foot zone for streetscape improvements. The assumption is, is the first 10 feet is a public zone. And then the setback zone, which is the minimum setback in the Parish Lane, is 20. So, the assumption is, we're dealing in a 30-foot area of zone. Functionally, on the UDOT road, we're not dealing with 10 feet. We're dealing 5 feet right behind the sidewalk. So, we're absent the park strip sidewalk concept in a UDOT design standard in their right-of-way. And in that, in that concept, you'll see that on the Walmart site, you do not see this trail, system trail, that separated, you know, from the curb to the berm, to the trail, to the buildings. You don't see that built there. You see a hint of that built on 400 West, actually, on the Walmart. Walmart put that in on 400 West because it said Parish Lane area. And so, you'll see a big park strip on 400 West and the trees, and then a sidewalk. And then it was substituted for a berm for their detention. And so, but that's really designed to be over on Parish, because that's where we have the birmingham. That's where we have, you know, our design standards associated with it. UDOT, at the time of Walmart, said, no, we are putting a sidewalk here. This is where our sidewalk goes. So, the problem came is, do we get a second sidewalk? Back during the commission time, do we get a second sidewalk associated with it and tie it back into the sidewalk system at the corners? As you can see that, well, maybe can't see, but in my vision of it, is you can see if you're incrementally developing that trail, you're always tying back to the UDOT sidewalk system. Who makes up the gaps when it's all finally constructed? And that was, that was the discussion back at that time. And it wasn't a lengthy discussion, because Walmart was riddled with much more to discuss about than that. What happened is, is there is a weak point of the ordinance that says, all right, if you can't do all these improvements that we're expecting, we'll allow the Planning Commission to modify. Well, in the case of that private trail system, it's a severe modification. And as you can see, subsequent development, you know, part of Parish was already developed. When that private trail system go in, it just didn't come to fruition. And so, what's been used is the weak part of the ordinance that says, hey, in landscaping section, we can adjust the standards as necessary. But I mean, it's an exaggerated adjustment. And so, we're not really following the intent of that private trail. And we haven't. And then, the concept is, was it intended that that private trail in the Parish Lane boundaries, where we have properties that might only have visual presence to the, does that property put in the berms down another local arterial or collector street? Like Walmart kind of did with the 400 West. And you can see that the function of that desire just fell apart. And we're not really using it. And so, for the long time, this problem's had to be fixed, because we've really just kind of set it in the background, used the weak argument of adjustments on future small little projects. And, you know, we still put the, we still put the streetscape improvements, you know, with the sidewalk. We still put the decorative crossings. You'll see that on Dairy Queen and Jiffy Lube and so forth. And by the way, that is a source of controversy when this current council was elected. They were not necessarily supportive of those decorative crossings. Another place that we still use the Parish Lane Design Guide is the street lamps, the decorative street lamp style. Again, that's another one with this current council that was very early on in their process that was concerned about that. We asked them to go through and point out what worked and didn't work as part of their work program. But that really just fell apart when we got into densities, Main Street, mixed use. And all of that worry seemed to take a major, major background seat. So, I don't, we're not fixing necessarily all the problems. I'm coming to you thinking we need to fix some fundamentals. You know, it's kind of like a day late and a dollar short fix. But, you know, I can't imagine that somebody coming in after me and looks at the ordinance and goes, what was planning staff and the commission and the council doing? Because we're not, this is not jiving with this language. So, that's a major component that I think drove staff a couple of years ago changing these. But we've never got around to making it a goal.
Corey?
Yes.
Can you explain to me what you mean with the Jiffy Lube crossings? I'm trying to, I'm trying to, what do you mean right there?
Is it Jiffy Lube? What's the one with the beans and brew?
In between there?
Because you got, it's not grease monkey.
With the cars.
And what was the concern that the city council had with the decorative crossings?
They, some of the mentioning was, is that they don't particularly care to worry about maintaining them.
What do you have to do to maintain them?
Well, if you, they're in our street, so if you have to go back in and do some overlay, the shoulder of the asphalt to the concrete becomes an interface that has to be dealt with. If some of the early stamping showed some signs of failing and has had to be fixed under warranty, the way the stamping was taking place, or getting the spalding occurring in the brick pattern. And they've had to improve that system. And so, they were, even our engineer and public works raised a little bit of concerns with the, with the ongoing design of those crossings.
So, was it our engineer or our public works, or was it the city council that had the concern?
Both. And it was a one-meeting discussion that really went nowhere, for lack of better terms, at this point. So, I don't know if they still have those concerns, or whether they've evaluated them away. But we still use a lot of the design aspects. The other thing I chose to throw in fairly recent was the concept of our discussion of quick quack. And tried to, not in the, maybe the best language, but tightened it up to match what the commission made a call about quick quack. You know, okay, it has presence. What does that presence mean? And tried to follow a little bit of why quick quack was brought into the visual presence, so clean that up a little bit. There are some design aspects associated with the Parish Lane design. So, the street lamps, you'll see, our illustrations are the least binding language of our document. The narrative always trumps the illustrations. But we do not use the illustrative decorative lighting style anymore. That's, we're completely different than that style. So, I put some strikeouts there.
Well, don't we use that? And we've used it in Walmart, though.
Well, we still require the decorative lighting and the narrative language. I'm just taking the illustration that says it'll be this shape, this style, because we don't use that shape and that style. We've used what's recommended by the public works for that shape and style. So, I tried to make some of those associated edits to the illustrations, saying, look, these illustrations are not matching what we're trying to do. And just because they're in our zoning ordinance, illustrations are the least relied upon merit. It's the narrative and the maps, and the illustrations come very last in explaining anything. The illustrations are not very useful if we're not doing the private trail and so forth. The lighting standard, we still require the decorative. We just default to the city spec for the decorative standard instead of that particular. So, I was trying to edit some of those a couple of years back that we're not using. And then there's a, so I, and then the Parish Lane and drawing people in, you know, what properties constitutes, they have this physical presence due to height and size and whatnot. There's another very, what I call weak, it's not necessarily a bad principle, but it's a weak element of the ordinance is, there was this throwing in of the ordinance, these random crime prevention through environmental design. In the early 2000s, crime prevention through environmental design was fairly popular. It was nationally popular, and Utah was kind of thinking about it. You saw Park City get very excited about it at one point in time, held some conferences, the planning conferences. And then it just seemed like in the whole planning community that that movement to justify design standards under a criminal prevention program has really kind of fallen by the wayside. But we have this loose language that editorializes to do that. But, you know, you have your, the Parish Lane, you have your shalls, and then you have your shoulds, and then you have your may. And then you have, well, here's a good thought. And it's, so I tried to tackle a couple of those, here's a good thought. And say, you know, if we really want a crime prevention through environmental design, we need to really discuss that if that's an important value. Because it talks about this, you know, whether you use sodium lighting, whether you use halide versus sodium. You know, because the two different types of lighting at night makes it easier to tell the color of a car and not the color of a car. One of them makes them more gray. People hiding behind shrubs, you know, where are they placed? And people hiding behind shrubs, setting up in an ambush-type style possibility with the landscaping. These are all these concepts that have just never really fruited, and we haven't really taken it on. So, I felt like if we're not really ready for that, this, here's a good thought, seems kind of senseless in the ordinance. Another slight senseless is the, you know, the bus shelters. Every piece of property is going to have a bus shelter? Not really. So, I change it, where they are located, or where they're going to be located, they're incorporated into this. So, I was trying to wrap it up. It doesn't have to be. I think the major component from my perspective is this private trail system that we've ignored, for lack of better terms. That needs a fix. And I threw some other things in there to try to clean up the ordinance without introducing the other controversies. And so, at this point in time, I'm just disclosing to you that it's a cleanup to some degree. But I need somebody other than myself to say, yeah, why don't we consider it?
And Corey, as I understand it, you're not asking us to debate any of the substance that you just talked about. The issue is that we've identified that there are some cleanup areas, and you're asking us as a commission to put it on the table so that we can talk.
You can talk about it, and you can just parse through and say, yeah, this needs to be cleaned up, and no, I think this needs to stay.
Yeah. Does anybody have any concerns with putting this on an item for us to take a look at at another meeting substantively?
I'd love to talk about it more, because there, I do have some concerns about some of the changes that we, that we kind of just discussed, because I think some of them from the original language are very important to maintain. So, if we talk about it, I would just really want to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what wants to be changed and how that affects what the language is.
Yeah, and this wouldn't be a one-meeting thing. I'm just, you initiate the action. I'm just, you initiate the action, we throw something on the table to discuss, you debate it, go through, render it to where you want it to be, then we can pose to hearing on, on the ordinance that you're looking at. Because I don't really have a specific agenda other than improving the ordinance itself.
I think that that makes a lot of sense. I'm going to go ahead and move to have the planning commission initiate the process for considering amending the parish lane gateway design guidelines as suggested and outlined by planning staff.
Should we, should we talk about our goals for next year first before we decide if this is something we want to tackle?
If you think it competes with your goals, I, I would say you can even hold off until you want to have a discussion about goals.
I just want to maybe see what our goals are first and then decide if this is part of our priorities.
I, I would be inclined to go ahead and direct staff, like get the motion going so that it's out there and then we can always put it on hold so that we don't forget about it. And then that way staff can be working on it in the background and bring it up to us if and when that becomes available time wise.
Either way, I see essentially talking about some similar stuff with Main Street soon, right? Sounds like the city council wants to initiate that and I assume we'll be a part of that process, you know? So this might be another good, this might be a good way to help. I don't know. If we're already going to be in that mindset, it might be kind of nice to kind of do that as well here. They're different streets and different areas and they have different kind of goals and functions, but I think that'd be nice for us to do that. So I'll second your motion.
Great. Any, I guess it technically is a motion, so any further discussion, debate, questions for staff? I'm, I'm just going to do an all those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And again, no specific timeline.
No specific timeline and that, because I think Becky makes a good point.
We've got time.
We, I mean, we don't know what our goals are going to be, but this way it gives you guys the, the green light to go ahead if and when it makes sense to tackle that and you don't need to come back to us for that authority later.
Right.
Okay, do you, great segue. Let's go ahead and talk about our planning goals and directives. You've given us some very coded language here, Corey, in your staff report.
You're being so kind.
Why don't, why don't you go ahead and, and talk about the, the upcoming commission goals and directives that you've laid out here in your, in your report?
Sure. I, I try to parse it into two different concepts, maybe not very well, but give you a hint of it. As you were aware, the use list has come up to the city council with your recommendation about adding some commercial uses to the project. They initially reviewed it at their last meeting and tabled it very traditionally that they don't make a decision on something the same night that they hear the public input to try to, try to think about it. However, there is some triggering concept, talk in that meeting for me, listening in onto the council of questions of, well, do we really want to? And I'm really just targeting it down. I don't think it was said, I'm not quoting anybody. I'm just saying, okay, this is what I've heard in these comments and I'm, I'm targeting to this comment. That, you know, there was issues raised about, well, why are we considering these uses when we really don't know what our design is? I think was brought up by the public as well as an elected official. So should we be, should we be considering uses prior to the action on what are we doing with the design standards on Main Street? There's been some public talk in the background that I've been made aware of since that meeting, indicating that same desire from a few from the public that are now beginning to express why are the uses coming when we're not sure what the design should be? And if we have a design, sort of example is, is if we have a walkable community, this is a, not a quote, but a rough summary. If we're, have a walkable community or walkable street, then some of these uses can, can conflict with that. So is the goal to have a walkable street or is the goal to expand the commercial and make commercial success of the property? And I don't know how it'll play out the council, but at the time of writing this memo, I think there is a potential opportunity on their part to table or stem off the decision on the use list. They may not, because that was hinted, if you watched the meeting, it was hinted that, you know, maybe we need to think about this for a while. Then there was a motion to say, no, let's, we need to make a decision, so put this on the next agenda. So I got the kind of the mixed signal of, okay, I agree putting on the next agenda, but are you really ready to make a decision on the next agenda or, or not? So I'm hearing the mixed messages from the city council and in the, for lack of better times, the rumor mill that's out there. I'm hearing the mixed message of, of whether to go forward. And I really honestly don't know what, but I, but I suspect that that will be a debate in their next meeting. And, and whatever outcomes of that debate at their next meeting it'd be. But I do, I have had one-on-one discussions with a couple of council members. And it came up on another matter, by the way, so it wasn't related to talking about the useless, came up with another matter that I'm involved in. And there was some expression that, here's my coded language. You know, what's driving, what's driving this? And who's driving this? And so in, in that discussion with a couple of council members, I said, well, you know, I tried to remind them of the work session. And so I, hopefully I'm recalling our long ago work session. That there was some discussion about Main Street and the design standards and the useless. And as I recall that discussion, you had approached the city council with, we'd like to tackle the commercial uses. And they, they at that meeting turned you loose on the commercial uses. So that's what I recalled and quoted at that time is that was, that was the intent. That's why we split it into two-part series. And, and so the discussion about driving changes, is it the public, like the Schup Construction driving it? Is it the planning commission driving it? Is it the city council driving it? And I repeated, well, somebody's got to drive something because I can't help anybody be successful unless somebody's giving a direction. And so what I've got feedback is, is that the city council does want to drive the design issues with Main Street. And what was the feat, what resulted in some of that feedback is not, I don't remember when it was, Lisa, just a couple of council meetings ago, I made a presentation in a PowerPoint because the quote came out, I use quotes from the council. How do we know what to change if we don't know what the ordinance says? So I had a work session with them specifically, talking about the Main Street design standards. To some extent, it felt disappointing to a few of them on the council because they said, but we don't really know what the design standards are doing. And I said, well, I can't have an hour, hour and a half meeting and walk you through line by line by line by line what it all means. I, I anticipated you would study them yourself. And I'm trying to give you the parameters so that you understand the parameters. So there was some frustration with me about that work session and the outcome of that work session. And so my response back is, is the council, if you want to drive it, then council, you need to get, you need to help us be successful. It's not just about staff, it's not just about commission and who's driving. We can't help you be successful unless we know what you're trying to accomplish. Is it specific? Is it broad? Is it somewhere a hybrid? We, we, we can't help you be successful. If you're frustrated with me as it's staff, I can't help you be successful if I don't know where you want to go with it. Because I brought up land use, you told the planning commission to drive it. They drove it. And we, I think, did some really good work with a tough little project to try to do a public outreach, you know, to it. So the feedback I'm getting is after the first of the year, they are going to hold a work session. And try to use the PowerPoint presentation and just talk among themselves where are they going? And I outline in our, my memo to you, the three things I told the council, a couple council members. Are we getting rid of the overlay and going back to the CM zone? Cause that's one way to solve it. I'm not saying it's the right way to solve it, but it's one. If that's what your goal is, let us know that's your goal. I don't sense that that's their goal, but I, I outlined it out there. The second one is, are we keeping the overlay? And, and why are we keeping it? What's our outcome of that keeping it? Because I have consistently, to some chagrin to others, said you've gutted it with the density of the residential uses as an incentive. So if you've got it with the residential for the incentives, what follows? The commercial incentives. You know, which, what, where do you want to get if you want to keep the overlay?
Which is the useless.
Yeah, cause the overlay, the overlay is truly, if you have no incentive for the residential and you have no incentive through the commercial, then really the design standards are terribly burdening everybody. And we've seen that in, in, in others, in the use process. You know, express that. So, you know, if we're keeping it, why are we keeping it? What are the incentives? What's the outcome that we're trying to achieve there? So we can go back in and make some of those amendments to the overlay and try to provide a balanced view between protecting the residential neighborhoods that are associated in this area, because they're so close together, but also the commercial interests that probably not all of them are going to go away in the next, you know, five years either. So you need to, you need to create that balance. By the way, these are rough conversations sometimes. The, the, the last one is, is at that work session, to some people's disappointment, I, it was Mayor Cutler at the time was mayor and he was talking about, I like to keep some of the design principles and keeping some of the building setbacks and not just going back 70 feet and having a bunch of parking lot in between. I drafted a skeleton in the attachments of that meeting, a skeleton Main Street gateway design guidelines. So you would, you know, the parish lane is a performance standard. It's not a, it's not a form-based code. It's a performance standard with design. We can also do that and do performance standards if the form base is, is not acceptable. We can alter and create Main Street's own version of its gateway design standards. That salvages the good designs of the form-based code, but may eliminate all of the worry about mixed use and residential uses. And I provided that in that work session meeting, which we never got to in that, by the way, in that work session, and I'm okay with it. But I provided it as an example of that's a third alternative. You know, and without understanding, are we just getting rid of it? Are we modifying it or are we replacing it? I can't be successful as the city planner. And so that's led to the council members that I had discussion with committing to approach the rest of the council and have sometime, I don't, they don't know when yet, but after the first of the year, sit down and see if they can hammer out a direction. And then we can now open up the commission and staff to begin the process of how we, you know, what, what direction we're going to go and, and, and attempt to have a, have conversations about. And so there's my hidden code language in too many minutes in a discussion. But their, their rough conversations is late, but I wanted to clue you in with it. That's why this memo was written. And so the, the part of the Main Street, I think, is a little bit different. It may spill over into the goal session, but I also use the second half of the Main Street uses to talk about future goals. You know, that's not the only thing. We've got a lot, a lot left on the plate that we haven't accomplished. So I tried to summarize what you did, I mean, I think it was Cassie, I was gone. And Cassie and you had a discussion about these, the trails committee. We were working on the Main Street uses. What was the third item? Oh, the west side plan, to know what happened in that process. So keep in mind that the first of the year is going to come, we'll get wrapped up in the, the Main Street again, it sounds like. So that's certainly going to be on the plate to finish, to do something and hopefully finish in 2019. But you have other goals. And I still think it's healthy as a commission to sit down with the city council, remind them what's been on the palette in the, or the plate in the past. And some of what your ideas that you think are important to go task, tackle, you know, is it the west side? Is it the community pathways? Is it these other elements? And I'm trying to just set that up in advance that that will be a competing interest along with the Main Street for our work session, working, not work session, work sessions of next year. So I just want to bring you up in kind of an odd memo, those two components. So thanks for lending an ear.
I appreciate that you gave us a heads up with regard to the design guidelines on the Main Street overlay, because I will admit that my sort of informal, one of my next goals would have been to tackle the design guidelines. Because I understood that as a planning commission, that we were primarily responsible for driving the bus under the direction of the city council. And it is frustrating to me to hear that after we sit down with the city council and they specifically instruct us to move forward with amending table of uses and we go through the entire process that we did soliciting comments from the public, staff went out of its way to try to solicit comments to get feedback. A lot of people on this commission gave up a lot of hours to try to do that, to be told by the city council that why are you guys tackling that? Maybe we shouldn't be looking at that issue, maybe we should be doing it in a complete fashion. I mean, I, I am a little frustrated and I think that the city council should know. I mean, me personally, I am frustrated. When they send stuff to us and they have us take the time to spend and do it, and then they say, never mind, right? We, we're not even going to look at what you did. That's frustrating to me.
Yeah, I hope I didn't lead that they've made their decision next, but I,
No, I've been-
But I am giving you what I'm honestly hearing and so I don't want you to be caught off guard. Because I respect your role as well as their role and I'd never want you to feel undermined by staff.
It's not the first time that the city council has done this to us. And so me personally, I mean, I'm, I'm probably speaking more directly than I should, but it really is frustrating to me as a planning commissioner when we are given direction by the city council only to have it be undermined down the road when we've done what they've asked to. So we can help them, but we can only help them if they tell us what they want us to do and actually mean it. So, you know, so I'm, I'm going to ask the city council, if you want us to help you, help us help you by telling us really what it is that you want us to do. So if they are telling us, planning commission, back off, we've got the design guidelines on Main Street, I think that's great. I'm happy to let them drive the bus. That's going to be their call, but I've always understood that the city council has an awful lot of stuff that they have on their plate. They have to deal with an awful lot of stuff in the city. And as a planning commission, we are here as a tool. We're here as a tool because we have the time to focus on handling those issues for the city council. And when they choose not to use us, that's their choice. But I hope that if they are going to be the ones to drive the bus on these design guidelines, that they actually make it a priority and do it.
Agreed. And I, I, I hope you hear from me that I don't know their final decision on the uses because I don't, but, but I do know hesitation is there, so I wanted to be honest with you. And yeah, I hope that you felt that I said the same thing. We can't be helpful to you if we don't know what direction you're really asking us to go.
Sorry for that impassioned outburst, my friends. I just-
You are our chair for reasons.
I was probably a little more direct than I should have been, but I, you know, sitting here and listening to that after all the work that, that we've all done and you've all done. I mean, you guys did a tremendous job to get that to the city council. So it's, yeah, it is, it's frustrating.
And we're going to be having a work session with them at the beginning of the year where I feel like it's, would be appropriate for us to voice these concerns to them and let them understand that. You know, when we agree on what our goals are, these are goals that spend resources and time and energy, and we'd like to make sure that those goals are something that's worth spending time and resources and energy on.
It's disrespectful, it's disrespectful to staff, it's disrespectful to this planning commission, it's disrespectful to the property owners and it's disrespectful to the public when the city directs that we go do this and then the city doesn't follow through with what they've instructed us to do.
And I, and I, they may follow through, maybe even a result of the few that watch this meeting may rethink, may rethink what their Tuesday meeting outcome might be. So, you know, I do hope I've at least represented. I don't know their final decision, but I do hear caution in the wind being said, so.
I, I appreciate it. If, if there is anything that you all know about me, it's that I don't pull punches and I'll tell you exactly what I think, so. Okay, so Corey, you had suggested that we as a planning commission take time to meet in a work session to work through our goals and contemplate future land use needs and create a priority outline. I would propose that since you want us to, to make sure that we've done it by April, but I think that while it's all kind of fresh on our minds, I would propose that we have that planning work session on the 23rd. So that's not the very first session of the year, but it would be the second session of the year. Does anybody have any strong objections? Is anybody going to be gone?
I won't be here that day.
You won't be here that day?
I may possibly not be here that day.
Okay, let's not do it that day then, because I would prefer to do it on a day when everybody is here. Is everybody- Is everybody gonna be here on the 13th, February 13th? Does everybody have their calendars?
Yep.
And we certainly could schedule a work session as part of your agenda on that.
Let's, let's do that then, Corey. Let's, on February 13th, let's, um, plan a work session in advance of our regularly scheduled meeting to, to go over our goals.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I would like to try to get that done sooner rather than later.
So what I would prepare for you is, uh, I think I've done it in the past, what, what past goals and concepts that I, I'm aware of, provide that in a memo to you so you can be refreshed on what was discussed in the past.
Yeah, great. All right. Um, city council report, is there anything else that we need to talk about on that agenda?
No, I think I covered that under the drive-throughs report.
All right. Um, moving on to our last item agenda, this is, um, we're looking at the preliminary draft minutes of our November 14th meeting. So we will do this in ordinary fashion, page by page. If you have any comments, speak, um, when we're on the right page. So, starting with page one, any comments on page one? Page two, on line 14, we need to take out the word "the" before "she." Any other comments on page two? Page three. So I had a couple of corrections on this page. On page four, or excuse me, on line four, it indicates that Commissioner Hurst stepped out of the room. That wasn't correct. She actually just sat in the audience.
I did step out.
For the entire thing?
I think she did go out, yeah.
I think I left, yeah. I was completely out of the room.
Okay, well then, never mind.
I actually sat out on the chair out there, so...
Were you? I thought, I, never mind. Then I'm perfectly fine with leaving, stepped out of the room. On line 29, this just read a little ambiguously to me, so I'm just gonna tell you how I want it to read. Chair Heeman asked if a reason was given regarding why the lot line between lots 11 and 13 was not straight. Just a little, we're explaining what I was talking about when I was referencing the lot lines. Anything else on page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven?
Um, I think that on the part where I was talking about drive-throughs, you couldn't get through another meeting without me talking about drive-throughs. Sorry, guys. Um, I think I, I think it was saying, on line 11, she felt they infringed upon parking and did not believe that they supported the city's general plan? If I said general plan, I think I was meaning the overlay. So if you can change that, if I said it incorrectly, I'm sorry.
Supported the Main Street for overlay?
Yeah, SM, South Main Street corridor.
Sorry, the Main Street what overlay?
SM, SC.
Okay.
South Main Street corridor overlay.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, on, I had a couple of changes between lines 25 and 29. Kevin, I don't remember if you said that you wanted to allow some drive-throughs but not others. It does say like Commissioner Daley, and I can't remember if you said that or not. And I didn't wanna attribute something to you that you hadn't said.
You loved drive-throughs.
No, I mean, I don't think I ever said that we should limit the drive-throughs. I think I said that they would be self-limiting in a way, but...
You did say that.
I'm, so here is the proposal that I'm gonna make, because lines, the, the sentences on lines 25 and 26 read a little awkwardly to me, so I would propose just striking those and having them read as follows. Chair Heeman expressed concern about allowing, allowing drive-throughs for some type of businesses, comma, such as pharmacies and coffee shops, comma, but not others, such as fast food, period. And on the very last sentence, starting with line 28, Chair Heeman pointed out that improved technology had allowed many fast food restaurants to mitigate, um, it just says some of the assoc, some of the associated odors, and what I was trying to get at there was to mitigate the associated odors about which some residents had complained. Cause the key there was the, it was the residents that were complaining about some of the odors. That was it, in terms of changes on that page. Any other revisions to page seven?
Can I change on 21? It makes it sound like, I, I, line 21, like I don't really want Main Street businesses to be successful, but I, I do. So I think it could read Commissioner Wright clarified that she wished, not that while she wished, just that she wished for Main Street businesses to be successful. And she is, she was, she is also concerned about increased traffic, so just so that it doesn't sound like, well, she's kind of concerned about this, but she's also concerned about that.
She kinda wants businesses to be successful.
I mean, she's like working this whole, like, use list to try to make sure that maybe they're successful.
As long as you walk to the business, it's okay to be successful. Just kidding. I'm sorry.
Technically, you want all of them to be successful except for drive-throughs and those are just happy to die on the vibe, right?
I'm happy for those to die.
Any other comments on page seven? Page eight? Page nine? I had two just very minor formatting issues. The, the line in between is lines 36 and line 37 is like an extra long line.
We're having issues with that.
Yeah, I, it's, it, it's not a major thing. And then we've got a, I can never remember if it's a widow or orphan, whatever it is on adjournment, down there at the bottom. Maybe with the changes that we've made, it'll kick it to the next page anyway. Um, any changes on line, or on page 10? Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes from the November 14th planning commission meeting as amended.
Second.
Who, who wants to claim credit for that? Logan will have it.
I need to save my, my, my seconds for later. Gina gets that one.
All right, Gina, Gina will officially be the second.
He wants to adjourn.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is it on the agenda. I do, before we adjourn, I just wanna say thank you guys all to your really excellent work. I think that we've done really, really good work this year for our city and you guys are all incredible. You really are. Um, I, I feel very fortunate to be, um, part of such a great planning commission, so thank you all.
You're here. I second that.